YouTube, thank you for joining us. This is the fifth in our series of seven candidate forums. Tonight is the Board of Education forums. We have, there's two races this year. There's District Two and District Four. And we have the candidates here for, for that tonight to be able to answer questions for you guys. For those who've been watching these, very similar format. For those who haven't been watching, we basically do a two-minute introduction. So each candidate gets to do a two-minute, you know, why they're running, who they are. We'll go into a round of questions. We'll get as many questions as we can in, in about an hour, a little, little over that. And then we do a two-minute closing after that. Each of the candidates have seen the questions. We sent them out ahead of time. We did that intentionally because we want them to have a chance to think about the answers and provide thoughtful answers as opposed to trying to come up on the cuff or even try to understand the question we might be asking. So those were sent out. These forums are being, it's a joint venture, Dorchester Chamber of Commerce. I'm Bill Christopher, President of the Chamber. We are teaming up with WHCP, the team you see up front here, to do all the technology to make this work, which is, we've gotten a lot of good quality comments about the quality of the videos, the Cambridge Spy, Talbot Spy is working with us, and the Midshore Board of Realtors. And so we've worked together to come up with questions that we think, that we've each got from our memberships and folks that we have that we believe are of importance and will actually help you better understand the candidates. We encourage you to share these videos, share the other videos as well. They're on our website. You can go out and find them, and you can find them on YouTube if you search for them. But you go to our website, we got the links there for you on the Chamber website, dorchesterchamber.org. And you can go and watch all the prior videos. This video will be posted tomorrow morning as well for you to go find this one. So with that, we are going to get started. We did do a random selection like we've done every night. The Ethel Hall is the, was the winner of the draw. So he will actually do his two-minute intro and then we'll just work our way around the room and, and start in the questions. So Mr. All, if you would like to go ahead and do your two-minute intro, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And see how lucky I am? It's good being with you and thank you for coming out this evening now. First of all, I just want to kind of give you an introduction of myself. I am a native of Wyomaca County. I went from there and I taught school two years in Somerset County. I came to Dorchester County and altogether forty years, thirty-eight years in Dorchester County. During that time, I taught for eight years and for thirty years I was an administrator, school administrator. During that time, I worked in nine of our schools as an administrator. And so I got to know many, many people and they knowing myself during that time. I've been on the board for a number of years. I'm an incumbent now. I got an opportunity to work with three superintendents during that time and other board members. And it's just good for me to continue to work with the Board of Education and the persons in Dorchester County. Again, I'm so happy to be able to be here. But again, thank you for coming out and I'm sure that you'll hear more as we get into the questions during this time. Thank you and God bless each of you.
Megan?
Good evening and thank you for having me. I am currently running for District Four. My name is Megan McCarter. I was born and raised here in Dorchester County. I graduated from Cambridge, South Dorchester in 2004. I did not pursue a degree in education. Honestly, I went into healthcare. So I left to attend college, but I returned here shortly after so that I could raise my family. I currently reside in East Newmarket. I have an eight-year-old son who is enrolled at Warwick Elementary School and he is my reason for being here. I'm, work as a nurse practitioner in Easton. I'm involved in Rescue Fire Company and I currently serve on the Tri-City Little League Board. I can also be found teaching fitness classes locally at Powerhouse. I have a love for this community and helping others. My three main focuses, if elected, include school safety, transparency, and improving our educational outcomes through a holistic approach between staff, parents, and the
Good evening. My name is Teresa Stafford and I'm running for District Two for the Board of Ed. I am a native of Dorchester County. I was born here and I started my teaching career shortly after I graduated from college. I taught in Dorchester County for thirteen years and an administrator in Caroline County for twenty-three years. Had to leave because there wasn't any opportunities at that time for many minorities to move up into administration. My reason for running is because I currently work with some of our most vulnerable citizens, kids from the Greenwood Avenue corridor. Those are kids that often you hear about when people are complaining about behavior. When you look at our task scores, those are the kids that are influenced, the low task scores. So my reason for running is to make sure that those kids on Greenwood Avenue and all kids in Dorchester County get an opportunity to have an equitable education regardless of where their zip code is. I really enjoy education. After retiring, I was recruited to be the Executive Director at New Beginnings. And maybe some of you have heard the things that we do there, the kids that we work with. And I just feel that as a person on the board, that I will be able to bring some of the lessons learned that have made me successful as both a teacher and an administrator and now an Executive Director working with kids.
Good afternoon. My name is Cedric Turner and I am running for the fourth district. I'm a father of three, a grandfather of five, a great-grandfather of one. Born and raised in Hurlock, Maryland, where I attended North Dorchester High School. I'm running for this position to help to equip the parents, the students, as well as the community and to help with the transparency that I feel needs to be included into the daily lessons with our students. Knowledge and opportunities are things that our students have to have a chance. They have to have a chance at a better life, especially the students of the North Dorchester area, which are impoverished students. I feel that I've worked with them for over thirty years in different positions as far as the Prospect Heights Playground Project and in my church where I see, I am seated as the laity person for the annual conference, the Methodist Men, chairperson for the Maryland Food Bank, community coordinator for Hurlock United Methodist Church, president of People for Better Housing, and the founder of Uplift Incorporated, a nonprofit that's devoted over twenty years of its time to helping underprivileged youth. Thank you.
And Sherri, you want to finish up on the intro?
Certainly. Good evening. I'm Sherri Hubbard and I was born and raised in Dorchester County, growing up in Bishop's Head. I graduated from South Dorchester High School. No, not CSD, South Dorchester High School. And then I went to Washington College where I graduated with a degree in English. I came back to Dorchester County and started teaching English at CSD, then North Dorchester High, then North Dorchester Middle. I ended up spending thirty-nine years in Dorchester County, teaching for most of those years, but I did spend five years as an administrator at North Dorchester Middle School. And then after thirty-nine years, I retired. And then about a week after I retired, I thought, hmm, I probably shouldn't have done that. So I went back and got a different job and taught middle school, of all things, in Seaford for three years. So I've had quite a vast array of experiences in education and I'm currently Vice President of the Board of Education. This is my second, second term as Vice, second year as Vice President. And I'm proud of the work that we have been doing and I would like to be able to continue our work looking out for the students in Dorchester County. Thank you.
And Sherri, you get to hold on to the mic. You're going to take the very first question that's coming out. So it's a little longer question, but let me get it out for you. So tell us the most important thing you want to do during your tenure to improve educational outcomes for children in Dorchester County? And what data do you have that supports your view it will improve educational outcomes for the children?
I think one of the most critically important things that our students need to be successful all around students in whatever classes they're in is the ability to read well. You need it even in math class. And for too long, Dorchester County Public Schools basically stopped formal reading instruction in elementary school. And so by the end of third grade, kids either stayed where they were or regressed a bit. So by the time they got to middle school, they were going backwards. And by the time they got to high school, they were experiencing difficulties. I went back to school and became a certified reading teacher so that I could help solve some of those problems and I worked with high school students. So I think reading is very important. And since I've been on the board, I have fought for and encouraged reading to be included in secondary. And we now have a program that goes up through twelfth grade and I'm very pleased with that. And the other thing I think is important, it goes hand in hand. Students can't learn to be good readers if they're traumatized or they come from, if they're homeless or whatever is causing them distress. So we need to work on having students be able to focus on doing well in school as well as providing them with essential skills. And I think having more counselors to help address some of those issues with traumatized students would be a benefit to help them succeed. Thank you very much.
Leota, you got the same question.
Okay, and thank you, thank you for that. As I indicated, I've been on the board after I retired in 2002, but I did not get on the board until 2016. And during that time, I had an opportunity to work with several persons on the Board of Education and three supervisors or three superintendents. One of the things that we must do and we've continued to do it and do that is to ensure that students receive the best education possible. We do receive requests from those who are working, staff at the board, directors for and other teachers to, for materials that they need and equipment and also books and things that would help them, the students and the teachers to give them the best education. We have to make a decision as a Board of Education to forward and go with those things. And we've been able to give them the best that we can. We must continue to do that because it's important that we continue to have the best staff that we can, the best teachers to give them materials that they need and things of that sort. If we do that, then we can ensure that they are receiving the best possible education. Thank you.
Megan, the same question for you.
I think this touches a little bit on what Sherri said, but there are many areas that we can be improved upon, but the most important thing I think is to promote early access to education. Poor literacy rates contribute to low school performance for children across America. In particular, low-income schools continue to struggle with declining literacy rates. That came from the Journal of Montessori Research. You know, there are multiple studies noting that early exposure to reading and learning improve our educational outcomes. I'd like to see us work together, maybe with local leaders, to really promote this. Can we get better access to pre-K? Can we start with earlier access, pre-K three, pre-K four, to promote and improve upon these educational outcomes? Can we work with leaders in the community and do a community outreach program? For instance, my child goes to Bay Pediatrics and every appointment at his annual, he's given a book to read. It's simple to start at such an early age. And how can we promote more families to sit down and read with their children? Right now, Maryland as a state only has forty percent of children reading on target by third grade. Dorchester falls below that unfortunately. That tells you right there that the outcomes in this educational system and in this county aren't the best. And I think this is unfortunate and I think these are things that we need to improve upon and it's going to take a team effort to do so.
Teresa, same question.
The most important thing that I feel that we need to do to improve education in Dorchester County, first and foremost, is to meet the needs of the people that we expect to do the job. That includes staff, that includes students, that includes parents, our teachers, custodians, from the top to the bottom. When we meet the needs of people, then everything else will take care of itself. I feel that using data in our system will help us improve the outcomes in our education. We have to set priorities and we have to put the money where we say our priorities are. When you have a targeted goal and you're putting the resources where you say they need to be in order to get you where you want to go, then that will take care of some of our things. I think that by doing that also, we need to give our staff professional development that's relevant and its quality, that we just don't jump on the newest bandwagon that comes along in education and, and try to do something about it. So when we talk about outcomes and educational outcomes, if you look at the data that was presented, I think in the April or March board meeting, ninety-eight percent of the students in Dorchester County are below level in reading and math, ninety-eight percent in almost every school. So if we want to improve those educational outcomes, then we need to get serious about our data. We need to own it and we need to make, you know, specific plans on how we will improve that data and the outcomes, educational outcomes for our kids.
Thank you. Cedric, same question.
Most of the time, most of the things that I feel need to be improved in the education outcome would be the reading. Because of the low numbers in our county, we, I feel that our students, if they can't read, they can't succeed. I've looked at some of the data and most of the data shows that schools like Vienna Elementary and Warwick, they have a better reading outcome than the other schools. I feel that duplication of those schools and the work that they're doing would give us a better outcome as far as our students are performing in reading and writing. And if reading is truly fundamental, then I feel that duplication of those schools and their implementation of the reading process, that is what we should do. Thank you.
And you just keep the mic, Cedric. The next question is going to be yours. And the question is, describe your understanding of the workforce needs of the community and the role of Dorchester County Public Schools in helping to prepare students to meet those needs. Number two, yep.
Number two. Companies will be coming through Dorchester County and I feel that we are growing economically, but our students will not be ready for them if we keep on the same pace that we're on right now. We have to first get our students up to par. Dorchester County needs a workforce that is prepared for the changing world. And this means college-ready as well as workforce-ready. And to do so, we have to move up into what's today's technology. We can't be back in what was going on in the sixties and seventies. We can't teach our children the way we used to. We have to bring it up to par. We have to have the proper tools to teach our children so that they will be college-ready and workforce-ready as well. Thank you.
And Sherri, same question.
Hi again. Excuse me. I think one of the things that is important to do is to speak to the companies and the employers in Dorchester County and to find out what their current needs are and what their anticipated needs are for employees. And I think we need to integrate those needs in our DCTC programs so that we can produce students who have the ability to jump right in and become employees of those particular companies. Because, you know, we used to have a very thriving industrial area here in Dorchester County and it has gone by the wayside, but it's trying to come back. And so I think that it's important to find out what the employers need and help them to do, to get that, those students from us. I think it's also important to provide students with things that they're going to use in their everyday life. I know that not everybody wants to go to college. My family was a family of watermen. So I'm the only person in my family who went to college. And watermen need to have skills. They need to be able to balance their checkbooks. They need to be able to sell their fish or crabs or whatever. So they need practical skills. And I think that is certainly a need that we should consider as well. And farmers too, they need to do all of those kinds of things. So, thank you.
And Leota, your same question, please.
We must continue to look at the workforce needs that our county has. And surely it's important that we keep in mind as a school system and those who are helping to educate our students, that all students aren't going to graduate and go to college. There, many of them are going to have things to do and will be working right within our county. Our DCTC, Dorchester and Technology Center, does a lot to help students to prepare for careers and prepare for things and work needs that they can do if called on. And we're very happy, we went to graduation, we saw that a number of the students were going on to college, but some of them were going to be working right within the county. So we must continue as a school system to ensure that these students are ready to work right within the county and must provide the kinds of things that they need to be ready for that kind of career. Thank you.
Megan, the same question for you as well.
I looked this up. As of December of 21, there were eighteen hundred job vacancies posted in Dorchester County. The jobs are there. You know, I think it's the role of the public schools to prepare our students for whatever role they may take, whether this be college-ready, whether this be a trade-ready, or whether this be within our local retail businesses. We need to do better in preparing them. I'm going to give you a quick instance in talking to a local business owner who employed somebody fresh out of high school who was unable to count money. Now, the register gave them the total needed, but she was unable to produce the money back to those customers. We've got to do better. You know, our students can be successful. We have to do better and I do think DCTC is critical in our trades. I know another local business owner who works in the trades, he's got six vacancies right now, looking for kids. The Youth Apprenticeship Program, let's start getting our kids involved in some of these trades and letting them take a look at what they may want to choose outside of high school rather than waiting till the end and figuring out where they're going to go from there.
Teresa, same question to you.
I think if you would talk to most employers, they would say, I can teach them the skill. Just teach, just teach them to show up, to ask questions and do those things that they will need to do regardless of whether they go to college or they go to work. The same skills that's needed for a person that's going to work, good oral and written communication skills, math skills, being able to read, become a part of a team, all of those things, we can teach. We don't need to focus on a specific task to prepare our kids. If you talk to anyone in the trade that has elevated to the upper levels in their trade, they had to go back to school. They had to read. They had to problem solve. They had to do all those things that we prepare our kids to do to go to college. So when you're working with employers, when you're talking to employers, then we need to ask them, what are the transferable skills? What are the skills that we can teach these kids regardless of the career that they go in, regardless of the factory they go in, regardless if they go to work for Dorchester County Board of Education? Because whatever skill I need to go to college, I need to go to work. I also feel that in our school system, sometimes we tend to have lower expectations than what our employees have of their employees. So we need to get on board with that. What is it that employers are essential to success in any employment opportunity? And we need to focus on that for our kids. Thank you.
And Teresa, you can keep the mic. The next question's coming to you.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm going to go to four because I think you guys, a lot of you guys touched on three already. So number four, and some of you touched on four as well, but I think it's a, you can expand on this one. So what value do you see in the Maryland Youth Apprentice Program?
I think that the apprentice program is a good start. It's a way to get kids in the community to see what is actually there. It's an OJT. It's probably much similar to when I was in school, we called it work-study. You went to work in an area. You got out of school a half a day as a senior and you went to work. You were able to apply those skills that you learned in the classroom to a real-world situation. And you had the opportunity to say, mm-mm, this is not what I want. It's totally different from what's in the classroom. So in an apprenticeship program, we have an opportunity for the employers to see the kids that we're sending to them and for the kids to see the employers. It's a good networking opportunity for them. And when you have on-the-job training, you're building your resume. You're a leg up on that kid that just went to school and took a lot of AP classes and can't balance a checkbook or did those kinds of things. So when we have an apprenticeship program, it is a program where we can give our kids an opportunity to see, this is what we have to offer and show the employer what they have to offer.
Thank you. Cedric, same question to you.
Okay. The, the Maryland School Youth Apprenticeship Program through the School of Technology is a phenomenal program. It gives them the skills and it gives them a lot of trade that they going to need in everyday life, not just in the workforce. It also allows them to gain hands-on experience and therefore make more, make them more implorable. It even helps them to identify potential employers. It, and it will ultimately help bring companies here to the county when you train and you have skillful workers in your county. Thank you.
Sherri, same question to you.
I believe that the Youth Apprenticeship Program is very valuable. I think it helps to produce students who have a good grasp of what it means to be an employee and it gives them a further opportunity to develop the skills, the basic skills that they have learned, for example, in DCTC. Let's take, for example, a student in welding class and they get to become an apprentice to an actual welder. Well, they've learned basic welding skills in class, but when they go on the job as the apprentice with the, let's say, a master welder, they learn all aspects of the welding trade and they get to put it, put those skills to practical use. So it's much more involved than what they would learn in a classroom. So it's much more involved than what they would learn in a classroom setting. And I think because of the in-depth nature of that and the ability to see the particular career up close and personal, shall we say, it gives them a really firm foundation so that when they graduate, they can walk right into a business or start their own and be way ahead of the game because they have had such intense training with a person who knows what they were doing. So I think it's a very valuable program, and I applaud it. Thank you.
Same question to you.
Thank you. The program that we're talking about, the Maryland Youth Apprenticeship Program, is really essential to our county and to our students. No one would want to walk into a program or take a career or do some work without first having some kind of training to work with people and things of that sort. So our county needs to continue to do this for our students so that when they do go on a job, they can feel secure. They are not going on a job feeling insecure, feeling inadequate. It's important that they be able to do these kinds of things. So we need to continue to do that, and we need to continue to look at any kind of program that would help our students to succeed. I think this is a good program. We need to continue to look at that, and we will continue to look at any kind of program that will make our students feel secure, feel that they are adequate, feel that they know what they're doing. And so we will continue to do that as a Board of Education, working with our superintendent and directors to make sure that we have the best programs for our students. Thank you.
And Megan, same question.
You know, for so long, there was a push to go to college, but now the trades are in such a high demand. You know, personally, I have a ton of patients who have served on trades, and their bodies telling them, I can't do this much longer. You know, the youth apprenticeship program is going to be huge and vital to these trade areas. It's a benefit for the employer, and it's a benefit for the student, all around making it a benefit for the community. The employees are able, the employers are able to train and meet their workplace demands. They're able to fill the shortages that they have, and they're able to train to their level of expectation. For the student, it's filling a vacancy. They're learning a new skill without having to take on the high cost of colleges, and they're able to learn money while they're learning this trade. You know, this is huge. That way, you're not coming out of school with a ton of debt going, which way am I going? I don't know which way I want to go in life. You get a head start to understand your step in life.
Cool. All right, you're going to get the next question. I'm actually going to skip again on you. I'm going to go, because, go to number six. These guys touched on this a bit already, and they're interrelated. So the Career and Technology Center is a valuable asset. How do you see expanding its use and return on investment to the community?
Well, there are already a large number of programs that are implemented, and they are very well-rounded at this point. One of the areas I would like to see it expand include our fire and EMS services. And I understand that this was tried and not successful in the past, but I do think there's a potential for a good partnership here. You know, currently, we have multiple paramedic and EMT vacancies here, and our local volunteer fire companies have trouble finding young people to fill these needs. You know, my husband went in when he was 14 and learned all the ropes from the older, but we're not getting the younger ones involved, and unfortunately, they're dwindling down. And these are volunteer services that need help. So I would really love to see DCTC expand on that, and I think you could partner with some of your local companies to do that. One of the other areas that I don't think is quite in there that would be beneficial includes outdoor or outboard motor mechanics. You know, we live here on a beautiful place on the Chop Tank River, and there are boats out every day. Look at any boat ramp on the weekend, and you'll see them out there. We've got a huge boat retailer here in the county as well, and I think having those extra trades would be beneficial to the student and the community.
Teresa, same question.
When we talk about career technology education, that's where I started teaching in 1977, and that's where I ended my career as a principal and supervisor of a career tech school in Caroline County and supervising those areas. I think that one of the most important things that we can do is to increase the access to our programs. Oftentimes, like Megan said, it was a push for college. However, if you're listening to the news, the state, the federal government, even employers now, are not looking for degrees, they're looking for skills. So in order to do that, we need to, first of all, keep our kids in the building. We have a ton of kids that leave our high schools every day and go home. They don't go to work. They, they're not taking a college course. They're just going home. I had one. My grandson was one. And now as a senior, he doesn't, as a graduate, he doesn't have a clue what he wants to do. He thought he knew what he wanted to do. So I think one of the things we need to do is to give our kids the opportunity to be dual completers. And as dual completers, that means that you can be a college prep track student, and you can complete a career technology education program. And I think that we need to do that for all kids. I did it for both of my kids. Both of my kids went to college, but they did a CTE program. I also think that we need to look at, how do we bring the community into our school? How do we open up those classes that we know we need in the community that are under-enrolled? Can adults and children go together at the same time in those, in those areas? And I think we need to start promoting career technology education programs at an earlier age. Not when they get to the 10th grade, not when they get to the ninth grade.
Thank you. And Cedric, same question.
The Career and Technology Center offers opportunities for people to gain work skills. The nursing program allows students to become CNA's Certified Nursing Assistance and to get a head start on preparing for nursing school. And the auto mechanic and auto body program gives the students valuable skills. So does the welding programs and the other programs as well. The program that I feel that we need to expand on is the nursing program. We have a large building out there, and it's, we, the nursing program is pretty full. We need to expand the nursing program because we have a lot of hospitals and doctors' offices that are looking for nurses. We have the room, we have the students. I feel that we need to expand on our nursing program, especially because there is a need in the country for this. The building itself is large enough, let's fill it with more students by expanding the nursing program. That's what I feel about it.
Thank you. Sherry, the same question to you.
Well, one of the things that has recently been in the public eye is the fact that the horticulture program that we had at DCTC is no longer going to be in existence. And there has been some concern that that has, excuse me, I'm so sorry, has gone away. I think what we really need to focus on is creating an agricultural or ag program that would help get students ready to walk out and be the farmers that they want. For years, this county has been a very rural agricultural county, and at North Dorchester graduation a couple of weeks ago, one of the students had in the brochure beside his name what his goal was as a job, and that was to be a farmer. And his family is a farming family, but how much better would he be prepared if he had some of those other business aspects of being a farmer in an ag program at DCTC? So I think that that would be a very valuable addition to DCTC, to really create an ag program that would benefit our rural community. And I think also expanding the technology that is being offered at DCTC because we are in, let's face it, a technological world, and every day we're called upon more and more to use technology. And I think that is critical that we expand that as well. Thank you.
And Leota, the same question to you.
Thank you. It's very important that Dorchester County Public Schools continue to look at career and technology. It's because, as has been said, we are living in that kind of world today. Everything is technological, and everything is doing something in that aspect. It's very important that we continue to work on that. I know that the Career and Technology Center has been around for a lot of years, and we used to call it the Vo-Tech Center. In that sense, I've been in the county some 54 years, and I remember that that program helped our church because it built the parsonage that we have right now as our church. So, you know, that program has done a lot. And it's very, very important that we continue to have that program and look at the needs that we have for the county. We can do that by just looking at what is happening, what we need to do, if we need to expand on any kinds of programs for the center. We will continue to do that because, as I said, we're living in that world now, and unless something changes, I'm sure that we'll be continued to rely on technology and things of that sort. So we need to look at what we can do to help with career and technology. Thank you.
And you can keep the mic.
Oh, okay.
Next question is yours, and it's, it is number seven. We'll stay in order here. Number, do you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or a representative of the school system?
I would like to think that I am a representative of both. As I've said, you know, I've been in the county for a number of years. This is home now, and I've been on many of the boards of directors in the county, working in the county in many kinds of areas, and will continue to do that. It's important that we work both ways and also look at the school side of it, because if we can't understand what we're doing in the communities, then we can't do very much as a school system. The, the both relate to each other. So I'd like to think of myself as working as a Dodge Board of Education member, but looking at what the needs are as far as the community, being as visible in the community as I possibly can, doing anything that I can possibly do in the community that will enhance, letting personnel in the community know who I am, what I can do. They can call me, they can email, things of that sort. That way, we find ourselves as working together. And I'm a firm believer, and I've always been that way, and I've said it so many times, there's strength in unity. And if we can come together and work as a community and work as a school system, then we're going to go forward. It's going to be a great time. Thank you.
Megan, same question to you.
I would say both. You know, as a healthcare provider and a former ER nurse, the best patient outcomes came from a team approach. You're not going to get the best outcomes in education without a team approach either. I think this is why I'm such a huge proponent for a holistic approach to better our educational outcomes. I want to be there for the teachers, I want to be there for the support staff, I want to be there for the parents and the community. All together, we're working towards a common goal, and that is for our kids. You know, parents, community, educators, staff should all be a part of the decision-making that are affecting our children. And there need to be open lines of communication between all parties involved to make these outcomes happen.
Teresa, the same question.
I would say both. I don't see how you can be a representative of the community and not be a member of the board and not represent the community. They both are one and the same. The school system is made up of the community. So when I sit on the board, if I sit on the board as a member, when I make decisions about curriculum, when I make decisions about budget, when decisions are being made about programs, when decisions are made about approving a promotion for someone or not approving a promotion, then I have to look at the community, and I have to ask the question, are the decisions I'm making in the best interest of the community, of everybody in the community? Not a specific pocket, not a specific community, because as a board member, I am there to represent Dorchester County, period. And so I have to be, as a board member, a representative of both the board and of the community.
Cedric, same question to you.
Likewise, I would say so myself, that I would be representing both the community as well as the board. As has been said over and over again, you cannot represent one without representing the other. To be able to represent the community is the first key, the key thing. You have to know what the community wants, you have to try to know exactly what they need, the kids especially, your teachers, your staff, everyone. And then, when you have an idea of what they need or what they want, then you will be able to better make decisions on all the things that you do as a board member. That's my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Sherry, same question.
The question says, do you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or the board or the school system? I would have to say that I primarily see myself as a representative of the community. I was elected from District Four to express the desires of my constituents and carry those to the board. And every time I have received a phone call or an email or a chat in a grocery store, and people say to me, I think this needs to be done, what's going on with this in the school system, or whatever, I have always, every single time, brought that concern or those thoughts, or whatever it was, question or whatever, and I've always brought that to the board. So I do see that as my primary role, to serve as the liaison between the community and their desires, and bring that forward to the board. That does not mean that I do not see myself as a representative of the board. When I am in the community, I certainly try to represent, when I'm asked questions or when I have somebody who has a concern, I always try to share the board's views and explain as best I can whatever the concerns are that that person may have asked. So yes, it is a both kind of thing, but primarily, I was elected to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry, you get to keep the mic for the next question.
Okay.
So, and we're staying in order. So the next question is, critical race theory has become a polarizing topic. What position do you think Dorchester County schools should take related to critical race theory?
I know this is a huge debate across the country, but Dorchester County Public Schools does not teach critical race theory. Period, the end. It is not something that's taught, and nor do I think that it's something that should be taught necessarily as a particular class. To my knowledge, it's usually only taught in college and/or law school even. To my knowledge, it's usually only taught in college and/or law school even. That's not to say that I don't think we should ignore historical facts, because I certainly don't. History is history and I think we need to be very honest about historical facts. But as far as the big hoopla about critical race theory, it does not exist in Dorchester County. There is no class on critical race theory. So, thank you.
Leo, the same question to you.
Thank you. I must agree with what has just been said. The critical race theory is something that we don't need to even look at or consider on that. We know that it is something that is looked at in the, in the country, but I believe that we were all brought here to do something. And we all must continue to do what we need to do. It doesn't matter what color you are or what origin you are, whatever, we are all God's people. And we must continue to look at that and work together. As I said a few moments ago, you know, there is strength in unity. We must look at that as we continue to work together. You know, if we're going to look at someone and say, well, I don't want to work with him, I'm not going to do anything, we're there, then we're defeating our purpose of doing things that we can do. So, I think it's something that shouldn't look, that we shouldn't even look at in Dorchester County. We should look at what we can do together, what we can do to strengthen our communities, what we can do to strengthen our school system. Working together is important. And I hope that we don't even move toward that kind of theory. Thank you.
Megan, same question to you.
I think all polarizing political and social topics, including CRT, need to remain out of the education system. We need to focus on fundamentals, reading, writing, arithmetic, facts, history, and promoting unity rather than division. You know, I heard a quote today when I was watching something, we're not as divided as we're told we are. And that is the truth. We are united front and we need to stay united. Right now, we have 31% of our kids reading on target by third grade. We have only 60% of kids or adults 16 years and older in our workforce. We have kids graduating who can't count money. I think we have much, I think we have bigger issues to worry with than polarizing social and political topics.
Teresa, same question.
I guess I have a different perspective on the critical race theory because I don't see it as a class. I see it as concepts that need to be explored. And to answer that question, I'm going to ask a few other questions. Does critical race theory offer truths, overlooked truths, ignored truths, or hidden truths? Does critical race theory offer a different perspective? Is it the job of the school system to teach our children to analyze information and draw a reasonable conclusion? If the answer to any of these questions is yeah, then I feel our school system has to answer as to what they should do with critical race theory. We have to explore why we would not want to teach critical race theory. If we expose our students to one perspective, then we should give equal time to other perspectives, whether we agree with them or not. I don't think bringing the concept of critical race theory into our schools will take away from anything that we're charged to do, to teach reading and math and all of those things. I think giving different perspectives to our kids and giving them the skills to discern the truth for themselves is what we are charged to do. We don't want to produce robot kids. We want kids that think. And if the critical race theory causes us to think differently, to ask some questions as to, wow, I never thought of it that way, then we've done our job. We've done more than teach them how to multiply and add and divide and to just spit back to us for a test.
And Cedric, same question to you.
Okay. Critical race theory, C-T-R-T, it has become a topic that is polarized on both sides of the issue. And even though it is a significant topic, we should teach our country's history, both good and bad. But also, teach it in a respectful way to find solutions in issues that unite us, like a need to improve the economy, to get along better, become the world, and because of the world's needs, all of us to, because the world needs all of us to find solutions to our problems, I feel that with the critical race theory, as long as we teaching the truth, that's all I feel. We just need to teach the truth.
All right. Thank, and you keep the mic. Your next question is actually yours, Cedric. So, the next question coming to you, the recent, most recent school shooting tragedy in Texas has many Maryland parents asking what can be done to better protect Maryland children. What do you propose should be done to better protect the students in Dorchester County?
Okay. We all have trouble with the shootings. And I feel that going in the, in the schools that I've been in lately, it's good that we have the new technology, but I feel that it is not enough that our metal detectors are in the wrong place. I went in the School of Technology and at this last board meeting that I went to, and I was almost halfway through the school before we got to the metal detectors. That's not going to save anybody. We need to reanalyze where we have the metal detectors and get a plan, a real plan on how we're going to be able to save our kids if something like this was to come up in Dorchester County. Because I don't think, this is just my opinion, I don't think they've even thought about it and really got a plan to save our children, from what I see. Thank you.
Sherry, same question.
Okay. I'm very happy that we were forward-thinking as board members this spring and we approved the purchase of five weapons detection systems that have been installed and they are operational. And at the last board meeting, we all had an opportunity to go through them and they are placed at an entrance. So, when you enter the building, you immediately walk through those. And it's very impressive, once I got through, I was able to see what they actually saw on the screen and how sensitive these weapons detection systems are to pick up many different things. Fortunately, we've only had two hits, shall we say, of things that could have been considered weapons. Fortunately, no knives or guns. But that doesn't mean that it couldn't happen because we like to think it won't happen to us, but Uvalde probably thought the same thing. And we see that it can happen anywhere. And I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to find the money to put in weapons detection systems in the rest of our schools. Because I think there are elementary students who might be tempted to bring something to school just as easily as a high school student. So, I'm very happy with that. And I'm glad that we have our SROs in the schools. So, I think we are doing a good job of helping to keep our students and our staffs safe. By the way, our students absolutely love the weapons detection systems from what our student board representatives have said to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leo, the same question.
Thank you. I, I feel and I think everyone seated there and all here, that school safety is extremely important. Not only in schools, but even those who work in your areas of work. Safety is important. And as has just been said, being on the Board of Education at the present time, our schools have put in effect the detection equipment that we have on there. We also have in our schools, our school resource officers. But we need to even now continue to look at other means of keeping our students, keeping our staffs in our schools safe. No one wants to be seated trying to learn, trying to do any kind of job and knowing that they don't feel safe. So, that's something that we are going to continue to look at anyway, anything, any money that needs to be spent for school safety is important. And we must continue to look at that if we're going to have our students to have the very best learning that they can be. I hope that if there are any ideas that come to us, then I'm sure we're going to take the opportunity to discuss and hopefully improve anything that we can to make our schools safe as they can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan, same question.
As I'm sure all of us sitting here, we hope what happened in Uvalde never happens here. Unfortunately, this is a complex situation that doesn't have an easy answer for a solution. I do think our current superintendent and our board have been working to have better safety systems in place and I have to give them credit where credit is due. You know, they've started implementing a weapons detection system, the teachers, the staff, they're trained if something like this were to ever happen. However, can we improve? We always can improve. Mental health is a huge area that we're not talking about, that needs to be targeted. We need to look at recognition and we need to look at treatment. I told you before, I was an ER nurse, so I've seen the impacts that mental health has on all ages. There are guidance counselors in place, but how do we improve the recognition of a child struggling? How can we open the communication for a kid who's concerned to bring that about? The other problem area is how do we get them the access to treatment that they need? And that's something on the healthcare side that we're failing at. I do think we need to have a school resource officer at every school. I've talked to county commissioners before and they come back with cost is an issue. I don't care what it costs. That's the safety of our teachers, our staff, and our children. And no cost should come before their lives. And the last thing is, we need to have open communication. If something does happen at our schools, we need to make the parents aware, even if it's a non-threat, even if there's not something that needs to be taken approach on. If something happens, the last thing a parent wants to hear about is from their kid and have concern that something worse is going to happen.
Teresa, same question to you.
I think in order to better protect our kids, we need to start first by implementing what we already have consistently. And I don't see that all the time as I go in and out of buildings. I can go to four or five different schools and how I am allowed to go in the building changes with each school, what the expectations are. So, I think we need to first do that. I think the other thing that we need to do is build relationships with the community. I understand that the weapons detection system is the greatest and the best thing out there that everybody thinks that we needed to have. But imagine if we had taken that money and hired bodies and put them in our buildings to develop relationships with our kids. If those kids knew something was going on or they knew that there was an issue that might come up, they would go to a trusted adult. The weapons detection system is fine, but when we find three years from now, we don't have any guns in our schools. We don't have that high need for weapons detection system. What can we do with that metal? But if we had invested that money in bodies, we could deploy them all around the county for a variety of things. I have to agree with Megan that being transparent with the students and the school community is paramount. I know that that's one of the biggest issues that we face with our current Board of Education and that is being transparent. I also agree with her that students and parents, we need to help them to identify the red flags and suggest mental health support that is needed and find the resources to give them the mental health support that they need.
And Teresa, you're going to take the next question?
Oh, okay.
And we're staying in order, it's number 10. So, besides attending school board meetings, what can or will you do to hear parent concerns?
Well, I think the first thing that I would want us to do as a system is to reinstate let's talk. I think that that was a powerful tool for our community because you could log in and you could be a community member from anywhere. You didn't have to be a parent, you didn't have to go to a particular school page. And if you had a concern, you could type that in, it would go to the appropriate person. I think the superintendent got a copy of it, I'm not sure if the board members did or not. But that was a way to open communication and not have people feel threatened about sharing their concerns. It was also a tool where we were able to give accolades. If something or a teacher or somebody did something really great, you were able to put that in there. So, that is one of the things that I would like to see us return to. I would attend school functions. That's one of the other things that I think is liking. When you go to a school function and the only person you see is the superintendent and the principal and the staff at the school. I think in order to understand and make decisions about resources and what's needed in our schools, we need to be in the schools. We need to walk the halls. We need to have informal conversations with people, both in the community and in the schools. I would encourage town hall meetings. I remember we had one superintendent and I can't think of his name, he lived in Tarver County. And he used to have a variety of meetings around the county, not just carrying the board meeting to a different place, but he actually had a structured town hall activity where he gathered information from the community. So, I think the more that we can be in the community, talking to people in a non-threatening way, that that's how we open up, that's how we make our decisions instead of throwing darts in the dark.
Parental involvement is needed and is desired to bring about change. So, opportunities to hear from the parents are welcomed because the board itself will not have all the answers. No one does. It would be, I feel that we, I would attend events and be involved with our students and their parents so that together we could work to improve the student's outcome. If a parent knows that you personally care about their child, they will be more involved. A lot of the parents have just disconnected with the system, the school system, the Board of Education completely. I know this because I deal with the parents every day between the different organizations that I deal with, with my church and with the different nonprofits, after-school programs and things that I deal with. If parents don't feel comfortable talking to the board, the teachers, the principals, they don't feel comfortable. Until we can get them comfortable and get them to know that you care about their students, their children, then you will be able to have an involvement with the parent, then you'll be able to get closer with the students. And you have to know about their environment as well. Thank you.
And Sherry, same question to you.
One of the things that I do is I make myself available on Facebook and I always welcome any comments or questions or concerns that people have, either on Facebook itself or on Messenger if they want to be a little more private. I attend many functions in the community and I'm always talking to community members, not just parents. and I'm always talking to community members, not just parents, but sometimes grandparents or just regular community members who don't have students in school, but they still have opinions on some of the things that they've either heard is going on in school or that they think maybe should go on in school. So I make myself available as much as possible. And I've never not answered a phone call or I've never not responded to an email. I've even gotten in trouble for responding to an email, which kind of, well, anyway, we'll move on from that. But so I believe it's really important to keep the lines of communication open and I try to do that as often as I can. I wasn't able to go this year, but last year I attended the Easter hat celebration at Warwick and I marched in the Easter hat parade at Warwick because I believe that I am a mouthpiece for the community to carry their desires and concerns to the board. And I try to keep myself as much aligned with the community as possible to hear what they have to say. Thank you.
Leo, the same question to you.
Thank you. I, I feel that it's very important as a school board member that you make yourself as visible in communities as you possibly can. Attending activities, meeting with parents, talking with parents, keeping your telephone available, things of that sort, email. Because parents need to have a way to talk to us. And I know at our school board, and many of you are aware of this, we do have on the agenda a time for public comments. Those who have comments and who need to talk and bring out things, needs and other things can do that. They have to go to the board and they have to sign up for a time to do that. And we're able to listen to those concerns. We are happy to get those concerns, those needs because it gives us something that we can work on for that time. But I, I think it's just important that we make ourselves as visible as we can. All of us should be able to go and visit schools. We do try to attend activities in the community and board graduations and things of that sort, anything that we can do. That's important that we let parents know that we're there and that we're visible and that we'll help any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan, same question to you.
So we're in an age of technology where most of us are accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that is my goal to continue is you'll be able to find me through phone, through email, you know, through Facebook, through Instagram. We've got social media galore and we can be found quickly. You know, I still do work full-time, so some of my limitations during the day might be there. But I want the parents to know that their concerns will be heard. They will be called back. They will be known. When time allows, my goal is to get out into the community events a little more. I'm out now currently socially, but I want to attend more school activities. I want to get more involved with the community outreach programs and be found. If you can't find me there, I'm sure you can find me in the gym or somewhere bouncing around this community. So I'm approachable and I want parents to know that I'm here for them.
All right. And you keep the microphone. And as I told you guys, things are going to go fast. So we are, this is going to be the last question. So we are going to jump to 14 just because we're at a time perspective. You'll get your two minutes after this one, but this will be the last official question. So, and you guys have touched on this a lot, but we really want you to try to summarize because we think this is important for the voters to know. What is your philosophy of education and how do students learn best?
I think children are complex individuals. This is not a one-size-fits-all approach. Our teachers that we have currently are wonderful educators and they do their best to tailor to the student's individual needs. Smaller classroom sizes would be more beneficial so you can continue to work individually with these students. Different approaches include hands-on, your clinical practice, your DCTC where they're in the field of their study, in-person learning, field trips, themed activities to create engagement. Look at creative play versus structured learning. All of our kids learn in a different way. You know, when we're in nursing school or we're taught pharmacology, we get to, we can get the same problem and get the same answer, but we go about it two different ways. And that's the same with our kids. They're not concrete. They're abstract. You know, I would love and hopeful that I'll be able to sit in the classrooms to see how the teachers interact with our children and the different styles that are utilized by them. Some may learn from each other. One thing I'd like to add is adopting ways that other children can help their classmates. If you've got a child in the classroom that excels at a topic, why not allow that child to work with the other children in a group or a pair? You know, you're facilitating friendships that could go a long way from there and it gives the teacher the ability to work with other students who may be struggling as well.
Thank you. Teresa, same question.
Interesting that I did my dissertation on learning styles and how kids learn best. So I love this question. I feel that my philosophy of education is that our job is to prepare our students to live, work and play in our society. And as Megan said, our kids don't all learn the same way. The sit and get is not it. These are not sit and get kids. If you walk into a classroom and that classroom still has desk in a row facing the teacher and the only person talking in that classroom is a teacher, that's not teaching. When you do your lesson planning, every lesson plan should address every learning style in that classroom. And the only way you know how the kids learn is that you have to do some kind of assessment to find out about your kids. And so when you can develop engaging, relevant instruction, then you've, you've won half the battle. It reduces discipline. It gives kids a reason to learn because somebody told me that I had to learn an equation. My first question and the questions of the kids today is, why do I need to learn this? Why do I need to do this? And if you're not starting your lessons with answering that question as to why it's relevant and important, then we've, we've lost our kids. You've lost half of them that way. They have to make a connection with learning. I really believe that in teaching our kids, we have to address the five senses. Learning must address those five senses. Because if they don't make that connection using those five senses again, we've lost them. We can't teach the way I taught in 1977. We can't even teach the way I taught in 19, in 2010. I just believe that education is more than filling in bubbles on a task. Learning is more than filling in bubbles on a task.
Thank you. Cedric, same question.
Okay. My philosophy is that every kid can learn and deserves an equal chance at the proper and enriched education. And this happens when the student feels cared about and knows that the educator and the parents believe in them. I'm not an educator as most of you have already heard and you see. I don't have all the answers and I won't have all the answers. But I feel that as you've heard tonight, we've got to first care about our students, come up to date with technology and grow with the time. Change has to happen. That's my answer for that.
Thank you. Sherri, same question.
My philosophy of education is that students learn best when they feel accepted and valued. And so I think that's one of the top priorities that teachers need to, to realize and to focus on making their students feel accepted and appreciated. I also think that the philosophy of education should be to make students want to learn and to feel that they can learn. And I think it all ties in together. When I was in the classroom, I always, I, at least I think I always tried to make all my students feel accepted and valued. And I've had so many students from years past come up to me, even, you know, just in the last week or so and say, you know, you were the most caring teacher I ever had. You always cared about me no matter what. I even had a kid say to me when I was assistant principal, after I suspended that kid for a pretty severe offense, when this kid came back into school and we had our re-entry conference, this child said to me, you know, I got something to say to you. And I thought, oh, boy, this is going to be good. This kid said to me, you believed what I said, or at least you let me say it and then you investigated it and I really appreciated you listening to me and hearing what I had to say, even though I did lie to you. So I think we have to make our kids want to learn and to care about them and let them know that we care and we're going to help them learn. Thank you.
And Leo, the same question to you.
All of us in the school system are, I would hope that everyone realizes that students learn differently. And that's something that we have to keep in mind that, and it has been said, that students do learn differently. Every time we have a board meeting, we are, we receive so many requests from teachers through their directors, through their supervisors of different materials that they want and that they need. Technology, computers, all kinds of things because they know that some students learn better though by just reading and writing, things like that. So some learn better through computers, some through cell phones, you know. And they have to keep those things in mind and they present those to us as a board. We discuss those things. We approve. I want to say 100%. It's very few things that aren't neglected, no matter how much it costs. We look at that. We know that these are the things that students need that they learn through these different technology activities and things of that sort. And we try to reach out to them and we try to provide whatever they need because we realize that they learn differently. And that's something that we'll continue to do. Thank you.
Okay. And you hold on to the mic. And you talked about being lucky at the beginning. You're still lucky because lucky to draw the way these questions went. You get this through the wrap-up first. So for this next couple of minutes, you guys, anything you didn't get a chance to say is your last chance for this forum anyway, to say something directly to the voters. Hopefully a lot of folks will be watching these videos. So you each get two minutes to kind of wrap up and say anything you want to say to the folks in the audience that are listening and anybody that's going to watch this video over the next couple of weeks before we head into the primaries. So take your two minutes.
Again, I'd like to say to those who have come out this evening, we thank you for coming out. We thank you for listening to what we have to say. The questions that have given, been given to us, we try to address them the best we can on that. As I did say, you know, I, I've been on the board for several years of Board of Education and worked with several superintendents, worked with various different board members. During that time, we've had a lot of things that have happened. We've had a lot of things that we've been able to do. And I'm just hoping that I will have the voters' respect and, you know, that they will continue to see that I'm going to be an asset to, to them because I'm going to do everything possible to make our school system the best it can be. You know, and that's what I'm hoping that we can do because we need to make sure that we have a safe school system, that we have the best equipment, the best everything that make students feel that they can learn and they will learn. So again, thank you for coming out and I hope that I will be able to rely on you. Will be able to continue this. I'm getting older all the time and I'm not going to be, you know, on the board that, you know, forever. But I hope that I can be on there for another term to do what I can do to help our students. Thank you and God bless each of you.
Thank you. Megan?
As I stated earlier, I have a love for this community. It's my home. I was born here. I went through the school system and I know that each and every one of our children can succeed. I have a passion to help others. That comes from my healthcare background. I understand that I may not have a lot of experience in education, but I'm a parent. I'm a parent who has a child in our own education system who truly wants the best for all of our children. We need to get the trust back into the board and to our school systems. We've had too many kids leave to be homeschooled or go to private school or private schools because they don't trust that they're getting the best education in our school systems and that should change. You know, the way we do that is be transparent, get the parents involved, the community involved. We can do this together as a team. When our education system excels, our community wins. If I am elected, I promise to work for each child as if I'm working for my own. We owe it to our children to do better.
Thank you. Teresa?
I guess in conclusion, I would have to say, I didn't sit on the board, but I haven't missed many board meetings. So I'm well-versed in what happens in the board meetings, things that get passed, things that don't get passed. As a candidate running for the school board, I think a vote for me would be a vote for change. If you don't vote for me, then one of the things you're saying is that you're satisfied where Dorchester County is. And I don't believe that any of us want us to be at the bottom. I don't think any of us want our kids, 98% of our school system, not reading on grade level. I'm a candidate that has walked the walk. I hold 12 certifications from MSD. I have observed every content area in the school system, from the school counselors to pupil services, special ed, you run the gamut. The only job I haven't held is superintendent, even though I'm certified, I've met the requirements for it. I feel that as a candidate running in District Two, that I can bring a different perspective. Because when we can reach the least of our kids in the environment that I work in in a nonprofit, then whatever I do for the least of them, the best of them will benefit. I hope that people feel that I am a candidate, that they can put their trust in, that I am going to ask the hard questions and expect the right answers. I'm a person that believes in data. I'm a person that believes that wherever our priorities are, that's where our money should be. I'm a person that believes that policies need to be written and followed. I hope that tonight I've answered questions. I've given you a perspective of where I come from. But be assured that if I become a member of the school board, I will work for every child in this county.
Thank you. Cedric?
Okay. As a candidate for District Four, I feel that I may not have the degrees that the other candidates might have, but I feel that I have the possible, the more than enough. I think that I'm more than qualified to do the job because I do know the county. I know the people. I know the parents. I know the children. And I too have attended a lot of the meetings. I've been in the system. I used to go to the middle school and the high school in North Dorchester and sit in on those classes and see what was going on. I think I qualify just as well as the next without all the education. And I will work to bring about change and transparency to the system. And that's why I feel that I need to be your next District Four seat holder. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Sherri, you get to bring us on.
Well, that's a good thing to be. Well, that's a good thing to be able to do. I have been honored to be a board member for the last three and a half years. I look at it as a great privilege to be able to bring the views of the community into the board and try and work things through to meet the needs that the community has expressed. I would take it, I would be very humbled to be able to get re-elected to serve on the board. Since education has basically been my life's story, it's very near and dear to my heart. I hold three different certifications as a reading specialist, a teacher and an administrator. And so I see from many perspectives various aspects of education. And I feel as if I am qualified and competent to continue to serve the needs of District 4. And I hope that my District 4 constituents know that I'm always available and I'm always willing to listen. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherri. A round of applause for these guys today. Thank you, guys. I told you we'd go fast. They go fast? Yes, very good. All right, so again, very important. A lot of races going on. This again is our fifth forum. We encourage you guys to share these videos with other folks in the community. Again, good audience here, but it's small. There's a lot of folks out there that need to know. This is, what these folks do is extremely important to the county, right? In terms of our next workforce from a chamber perspective. Again, we care about the kids, but we also care about business and workforce. And what we turn out of the school system is going to determine how successful we are in terms of a community, and success begets success. So it's important. So we encourage you to take what you heard tonight, make an informed decision for yourself, but also help to share that information with other folks so they can make same-form decisions. So if you heard things you liked or you heard things you didn't like, share them, right? I mean, share both. Get them out in front of the other folks. Share the link of the video and get them out. And I ask you to go watch the other videos that are out there as well for the other forums, depending on your district and where you're at. Next week, we're doing State's Attorney, extremely important role for the county. And we're also doing the Senate next week. So those will be the two forms that we'll be doing next week. Thanks again to WHCP for the work that they do for all the technology, to The Spy. The Spy is also publishing these videos, so you can watch them there. And for Midshore Board of Realtors, for all your support, the water and the cookies and pretzels. Hope you guys left me some pretzels. We'll get those as we're packing up. I'm sure the candidates, if you have any questions, they'll be glad to stick around and ask them for you. So come up and ask them, and have a good evening. Travel safe tonight. Thanks for coming, folks.